Too slow through me.
The day was just after that. That's a good day. I didn't know I'd see the sun anytime soon in my life. I had to get changed by the door.
Hey, that's a good deal.
Well, I changed the schedule. Worked because I figured the bridge was going to be there. There was a bridge. I thought, well. I would give course.
Breathman trying not to kill you over there. Yeah, yeah, on Breathman. It's a real trip.
Why I like it because it kind of whets your mouth, you know?
Ah, no. Takes afternoon. Just sort it all out.
Target, where the ball is.
Call committee meeting to order, call the road.
Mr. Elliott.
Here.
Mr. Hoffman.
Present.
Mr. Niedner.
Here.
Mr. Paulus.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Stevens.
Present.
Mr. White. Mr. Wood.
Red.
Mr. Niedner.
Fire committee. I'll call the fire committee to order. We didn't have any business, so there's no minutes for last time. Open the meeting to any visitors or anybody outside of the fire committee that has anything for the fire committee. Old business, non-new business. Corey Anderson has resigned. The fire department is recommending Skylar Pitzer to replace him pending a background check and a physical. So I would make a motion to take to full counsel. I guess the consideration of hiring him.
Second.
All those in favor? All right. And any other new business for the fire department or fire committee? Our next meeting will be July 1st. Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Police committee.
Okay, I'll call the police committee meeting to order. All members present. I make a motion that we approve the minutes of our May 6th committee meeting at second. Motion and second. All those in favor? Motion carried. We have some impounded vehicles that Chief Hughes is planning to have an auction on probably sometime later this month. There's 10 or 12 vehicles in the impound yard to get rid of those. We have a new police officer, William Harrison, who will begin his work tomorrow. He has worked for the county and he's been a military MP. He's coming onboard, I believe, effective tomorrow. We had the shot clinic last week for the animals to come and get shots and get their tags and all. We had 60 responding to that, which was really good. We have not gotten the no parking signs painted well up by the Catholic Church. Other places around that need them to see coming up the cross streets. We've had floodwaters and it seems like it rains almost every day, so that has not been completed yet. And I might ask Bob if anything about the crosswalk at 6th and Georgia, if that's been scheduled for painting. I've been by there a dozen times.
Not this time with everything that's going on.
Okay, that's still in the works. Does anyone else have anything for police committee? Bob, you have anything to add? That's all we have, Tom.
Okay, thank you. Streaching out. I made a motion to approve the minutes from the April meeting. Mr. Niedner, second motion. All voting yea. Motion carried. His second. That's all I have.
I had just a little new thing. The city request form, based on the printed version, I put online. I showed it to Bob. Under the residents tab, you can, on our city website, you can find that form. You select who you want it directed to, so it'll go to either the city, Bob, or it'll go to the police chief, or it'll go to city council. If it goes to city council, those of us who have email addresses, it goes, it routes straight to us. Otherwise, it goes to Sharon, and she can put it in your box. But it's exactly the same form. It does have one interesting piece to it that the paper form does not, which is the ability to, on the email that whoever is notified gets, there's a button you can click and he can up, like Bob could go and update, update that, so that you could see, hey, I reported this, but it's happened. Or, but, but it's been fixed. There are three things on that, and I was just going to ask you about them. I know it's been a busy week, but, and I don't mind going and replying on behalf of the city. But there was a sewage leak on 11th and Georgia. Has that been completely addressed over by, it's by my house. Where it came out.
It should have been. Kent says it has been done, repaired.
Okay, great.
I think that fell down the water park.
Well, I could bring it up there. I was, I was just going to bring up.
Well, it was going out in the streets.
Oh, it was in the straw sewage down the street, so. Which, wherever you want to do it. The, there's a sinkhole was reported at Tennessee and 5th Street. I'm unsure if anybody's looked at that. Maybe check that out. Let me know if you want me to reply to that.
Oh, that was on the bridge?
Yeah, like on that little bridge where it's all crumbled.
Over by the bridge?
Uh huh.
Okay. Has been taken care of?
That was my understanding.
Maybe we could verify that. I just wanted to make sure we're following that feedback loop, so people who go there can see that it's on. And then I believe I noticed in the report that the stormwater culvert at Sycamore and Mary's was addressed.
Yes.
So that was completed too, so I wanted to, you know, mark that one completed as well.
That one has been taken care of.
That's all I have.
Bob, can, can, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
The dip in Georgia Street? Do you know what's causing that? It seems to be getting worse.
It's lower than the other side.
Yeah, it's really weird.
No, what I did do is I marked off two points.
Okay.
And struck a line between the two of them and measured it to see what the actual dip. And right now, the actual dip is like an inch and a half.
Okay.
So, and then we're going to see if it increases. If it increases, then that leads us to believe that possibly we might have a water main lake undermining everything.
Okay.
Bob, would that be, that's not where the culvert is, goes down that little ditch, is it?
No, it's right there at Kelly and Georgia, on the south side, right next to 5th Gear's property.
Okay, and I was going to break it to you, did you? There's some alleys around town that need hope pretty bad. If the men ain't doing nothing, they could.
You'll have to let me know so I can see if they are dedicated, and if they're not, then it's not ours.
I'll break that to you, Mark.
We still have a water problem at the intersection of Marion and Kentucky. Somebody thinks it's the tank up, another person thinks it's a spring.
It is a spring.
I understand if you test it to see if it has chlorine in it, you can tell what you.
We've done that.
You tested last year, did you?
Yeah, we've done repeated testing.
Yeah, but the problem is that the site where the water is running is much lower than the drains.
I understand that, and we can correct it by some constructive work. But you're, basically, you're talking about putting like a drop box in with a type of grated catch basin in it.
Because it runs all winter and it becomes a safety issue.
And the problem is when you use chat on it, then they fill up and it just cascades. But, I mean, it can be addressed.
See that statement? Oh, yes. Buildings and grounds. Mr. Elliott made a motion to approve the minutes from the April meeting. Seconded by Mr. Hoffman. All voting yea. Motion carried. Removal of the concrete of 5th and Tennessee has been approved, but we can't get to it. We have the fence for the new ball field. And I understand Curtis Henderson is working with the school board about the money and, and according to the paper, it was looking good. Mr. Carter inquired about the status of the runoff water that's affecting his building. This will be addressed at the council meeting May the 13th. Bob, have you talked with anybody about that?
Basically, I've got, and I apologize for not being able to get to, get these to you before tonight. But we've been in talks, talks with Mr. Carter and the Dempseys on giving, or selling them some of these properties that the city owns. And I'll bring that up under ordinance.
Mrs. Smith inquired about the old Hodges building. Mr. Jenny stated that we need to make a decision either to demolish it or repair it. I've taken Mr. Hoffman down there to look at the inside of it. And I think he'll agree with me. The building is in terrible shape. I think something ought to be done about it. I see now the building next door is for sale. The Maxfield Building.
Yeah, he's had that for a long time. He just finally put a sign in it.
Sign.
Yeah. But I still am of the opinion that we don't need to lose another building, and the hotel was in a lot worse shape, I think, than Gerthus was when.
Well, the best recommendation I could make was then you put out an RFQ for an engineer.
Right, that's, that's just where I was headed, Bob. To give his recommendations.
Go say yea or nay.
Yeah, that was going to be my recommendation.
Didn't you have a bid on demolishing that building one time?
It was 50,000.
We don't need to lose another building. It's just one after another and.
I don't think we'd be lucky enough to find a buyer for it, but.
Well, the city has owned it for a long time and basically sat on its hands and not kept it up.
Yep.
We haven't owned it that long. We inherited that compliments of Sterling Point LLC.
Yeah, we, we owned it before that and then, you know, sold it to them, I think, right before you came. And then turned around and got it back from Keith. So we've, we've owned it and then not owned it and then owned it again and. Are you through, Larry?
I think that's all I have.
One other thing, a couple of other things I was going to bring up, and you mentioned the ball field and they're working on. I haven't been down there in years because my kids don't play ball down there very much, my grandkids. But I did take my granddaughter down there. That parking lot is awful. Is in awful shape. I was astounded how bad it was. And there again, and we've talked about this a couple of years ago, the city hall parking lot is getting, to me, seems to be getting worse. It's like being on a roller coaster, driving through the parking lot. Just for things to consider in the future. I'm just throwing those out there. I'm not saying let's fix those right here and now.
You need some money.
Yeah.
Bob, is there any way to expedite finding any answer out from MLB on that grant?
I've sent him emails. He got no response back.
Those are the only things I can learn.
Sal and I went out there and looked at it after a pretty good rain and everything. The city did go out there and gravel around the bleachers that were in a pond. Real good job on that. I'll agree on the parking lot. It needs to be enlarged.
Well, there was, you know, right, right as you go around that first curve, there's a significant hole. The whole thing is a mess.
One of the things Larry and I were trying to do was get Curtis and Mike Lynch together and really start game planning a little more on what they're going to do in long term with the park. Beautification, that kind of thing. When he took me out there, I was actually, they did a great job on those bleachers. There's no reason that we can't have a few projects with their help and planning for financing instead of just, you know, coming to the city and saying, hey, we need to, big dollar amount every time. They didn't plan these five-year plans out.
Right.
Something that small, and I'm there every day, obviously, the two kids playing, but something that small was great, was great what they did down there. We, the, well, I don't know, the parking, I don't know where you're going, where you're going to come up with it. That's the question. Where, where's it going to come from?
It has to go to the far end.
Yeah.
And we talked about that. I think that could be done, but with all the other problems we're going through is, I think it's a fall-winter job.
Right, right.
But you're right. It's, it's crammed to the hill, which is a good problem to have, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We're running out of space.
Also, I've wrote my word a couple of times lately after that last rain. And I think the city's done a good job on the ditches because the runoff was in the, in the ditches. It stood out in the road. And there's, I've got springs up there. There's one that up behind Robin Gold Building coming down that hill, making a corner, and that, that is a spring. I talked to the people there, and she says it'll run a couple of days or maybe a week and then dries up.
Well, after a significant rain, I can't remember what night it was, and I parked on Georgia Street, and I literally had to walk through a river. That's the only way I could, or, or lake, or whatever, this wide, running down Georgia Street. I mean, there's nothing you can do about it. The storm sewers just can't hold it, but it was just astounding how much. And, you know, those are things that just happen, so. I didn't think I was going to need it. It wasn't raining when I left.
Are you saying anything?
I still have something, Larry. A few months ago, the fence behind the firehouse came up for bid, and you had a bid on it, on Mr. Blalock. And I indicated that perhaps maybe the LHPA might be interested in the fence. We've taken a look at it, and the safety issues are just simply too, too much for us to consider. And so, I guess I would recommend that it go to Mr. Blalock. He's given a reasonable bid, I think, so also.
What was that bid? Do you remember, Bob?
151.
Yeah, 151.
And he was going to remove it and everything himself.
Okay.
For 150 dollars.
Make it a lot easier to maintain.
That's at the back of that lot, right?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Water committee. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the May meeting.
I'll make the motion.
My second.
All those in favor? Bob, what we had on that, the tank on the west end, on that, were you looking for a grant to help us with that?
I'm still waiting to hear on my application for the engineering study on it.
Are you, are you still proceeding with that lease buy thing that we talked about here?
Basically, I'm just waiting to see what the engineer would, you know, if we get the state revolving fund grant for the engineering services, then I'll basically go with them. What I have learned in the interim is that 5th Gear is going to construct their own type of system that will support their fire suppression for 5th Gear. Yes, just strictly for 5th Gear, so that they can increase their vertical storage.
What's the right table also do? Industrial part?
It would be recommended depending upon what type of industry you can attract out there.
Okay, if you could, give us a little short report on the wastewater plant where you're in, what the flood has done to us.
Okay. Basically, what they have done is during the flooding conditions, when the water's not over the roadway down there, they've been erecting the composite interior walls, getting all the rebar and everything prefabricated. And those are basically ready to set in place, and that way they can farm it and pour it. So they're just waiting for the river to drop so they can go ahead and get that part done.
But they're still, the water's still holding them up though, right?
Yeah.
And we got this little thing here, this public notice that.
The tri-hail of my things. And that is, basically, you get four quarters, and we've got several locations within the city. And when that running annual average exceeds 80 milligrams per liter, and we exceeded it in this last quarter by 2.29.
Definitely.
And that's what messes you up, so. And this is DNR's requirement. This is how we have to address it.
They said you don't need to do anything.
No, there is nothing to do. This is all part of that LT2 project and doing the cartridge filtration with the carbon as opposed to going to UV.
Is there some kind of median number that, that most towns usually stay with the water treatment plant? Like that's, we're at 82.2. You know, the MCL.
80 is MDNR's recommendation.
So they.
So once you exceed that running annual average, and they do it for four quarters.
Well, my question is comparatively to other towns. Do we know that? Is that something we can track?
Um, yeah, I should be able to get that information from the office.
I'd kind of like to know that. I mean, so I, I could talk to the office about it, but that's something, I mean, if we're substantially higher, that's something to be concerned about.
No, we're not, like I said, we're just over that small gradient, and it's a matter of flushing and adding the carbon to the system.
That's all I have. Let's sum it up.
Yes, I have a question, Mr. Jenny. What engineering firm are you waiting on to get a report back about the west end and the water tower? Because it seems like we've been waiting a long time to hear back from them.
That wasn't an engineering firm. That was a grant application.
No, you said you're waiting for it from an engineering.
That was a grant application.
You did not say you're waiting for some report from an engineering firm.
No, ma'am. I said I can't get a report from an engineering firm until we put it out for bid if we get the grant.
Okay, so how long before that happens? Because we've been hearing this for.
I'm waiting on the state.
Do you have any idea?
They'll tell me when it comes down.
Whether we get it or not.
That's correct.
So we may not even get it.
That's correct also.
Is there a timeline they set on when that?
It's all their funding and what they, they're in the midst of their budgetary process also, so. I don't know what they're going to cut and what they're going to provide for. I just make the application and hope that we can get it.
Well, I understand that, that 5th Gear has just given up on the city doing anything and they've gone.
No, you're phrasing that incorrectly.
I am?
Yeah, because we offered them the opportunity to partner up with the city on a CDVG grant that would have cut their costs considerably. But their management and their chief financial officer chose not to do that.
Okay, that's not what I was told, but I understand what you're saying. At the same time, though, for what kind of industries can we attract out there if we don't have that available for them?
That's going to limit you. Most assuredly it will.
So it is pretty important to get that.
That's my recommendation, and that's what I've been trying to pursue.
If nobody else has anything, that's it. Okay, thank you. Grant committee.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 6th meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. You just addressed the grant for the tower. Do you, are you working on any other grants right now, Bob? Oh, the MLB.
We had the one with the scrap tire grant for the benches and that. And because of flooding and other issues, I still have not heard back from the state. Because we sent in, the mayor signed three sets of the approved contract and everything. And I'm still yet to get our copy returned back to us.
Okay, and you haven't heard anything from the MLB one? So you've got a couple in the works that we just haven't heard back from.
Yeah, and surprisingly, on the first go-around with MLB, I had it back within 30 days, and it's going on 60 days now.
That's not looking good, is it? Have you, at one other time, we looked into trying to do something down here at the south end because of the flooding, and the railroad was agreeable to it, if we use their engineers. Have you been back in contact with them to see if we can't raise that levy or, or whatever we can possibly do?
Actually, it wasn't raising the levy. It was putting in, basically, like a floodgate.
Yeah.
In their culvert exiting into the Noi Creek.
Yeah.
But there again, if you get heavy rainfall like we had, there's no way you can put it in place.
Right.
Because you would be backing up even that much more off the town branch.
Yeah.
It's, it's kind of only useful when you're not getting heavy rainfall, so.
So, is there, if you get this grant for this engineer that, that you've been trying to get, is that something we can maybe utilize that for to, to get a study? So maybe we could do something at the south end for the businesses? Or not?
No, because that would be strictly related to the water bank.
Okay, so we might want to think about finding a way to do that so that we can.
Again, get me some monies and I'll be more.
Okay.
Do we have an idea how much something like that would cost?
An engineer?
I mean, they'd be talking about a pumping station, that kind of.
Forty, fifty.
Probably easy.
Yeah. Because I know the LT2 project is, I want to say that was 40,000.
Is that something we could look at to find out what the cost is going to be? I mean, put it out for bid to see about getting an engineer to give us a study on that? Or would that be just wasting their time?
Basically, we're going to do the RFQ first.
Okay. And that's the requirements or whatever you call them that? Okay, okay. That's all I had for grants. Is anybody else? Bro?
You know, hindsight is always best, but I was chairman of the grant committee and realized at some point thereafter, and I don't know if it's possible, and I don't want to create more work for anyone, and maybe you all don't even need it or care about it, but I always. it, but I always, afterwards, I thought, you know, it really would have been handy for me, when you applied for a grant, Bob, if you would send a copy of that to the chairman of the grant committee.
Sure.
Then I would have been more on top of what had been applied for, my meeting, my questions. I could formulate better questions about those particular grants if I had known what had been applied for, or the partner came to a meeting.
Right.
So I just thought I'd just throw that out there.
Not a problem.
I don't know. It's only demolition, so it's...
Um, how, where, where are we with this? I'm sorry, are you done, Rob?
Yeah, but I'm saying, only if you feel it's...
Yeah. I think, yeah. Where are we with the demolition grant?
It's done. The demolition contractor's been paid off. They've gotta send one more set of papers finalizing the deal for the mayor to sign, and they haven't got them to us yet.
And then we have the closeout here in...
Yes.
You recall the data that I don't, oh, family.
It's June 12th, 13th, something, I believe.
Okay.
10:00 AM here in City Hall.
Okay. Okay. That's all we got.
Ordinance committee?
Ordinance committee met on May 6th with all the members present. The minutes of the meeting, the previous meeting were approved. The ordinance committee tonight has several ordinances to consider, and the committee has been asked by the ordinance authors to bring them to full council. So I have prepared for my committee a listing of the seven or eight ordinances that I have in my possession to...
I was gonna say, Chuck, I don't have some, why I don't, I don't know. I don't have copies of at least two of these.
I don't know. I received all of them in this room, so I, that's what, tonight's first time I've seen one of those.
Well, I've, I've brought them and passed them around. I don't mean to jump, I'm not on your committee.
Please.
But I don't know that they all, there's no rush. I mean, if, if you don't have them, we can get you copies. We just need to identify which ones are...
What I was gonna say was, I don't mind taking the full council, but I would like to have a copy immediately.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll say something, Chuck. Normally, these ordinance at your request is turned into the city clerk, so she can put it on the disk.
Sure.
When she types it up, then she sends it to Rapp, our city attorney, for validation and make sure it's legal.
I, I've given all of them to Sharon. She's asked me for two of them, in fact, outside of session. She has all copies of all of these.
Okay, so I'll have her type them up and then present them to Mr. Rapp.
Okay. So then, I guess, I don't really have anything I can... Is that...
Sharon, give me a copy then, and this is done. I'll make sure that she gets all of the type and sends it to Rapp.
Does everybody have a copy of the ordinance establishing the salaries for the city attorney, city prosecutor, chief of police, city judge, city treasurer, city clerk, fire chief, and the fire truck driver, custodian for the terms of June 2013 through May of 2014?
I do have those, yes.
That one, I would suggest that you go ahead and...
Yeah, there's three in this bag.
Yeah, and the other two are budgetary items that are regrouped.
I noticed the budgetary item is exactly the same figure as we talked about later. Where did the money come from? Or, you know, there was a discussion about who was correct on where the money was to come from.
Basically, after meeting with Mark Ross and that, and Christina was there, as was Renee, as far as money-wise, the monies are there, it's just harder to track it. And we're going, our intent is to modify the format in the water department budget so that these monies are easier to track, and it's readily apparent and transparent that X number of dollars is here for operations and maintenance, X number of dollars is here for capital improvement.
You're talking about the specific accounts?
Yes. That's what we're looking at.
So those monies are actually there?
The monies are there.
Over a million dollars' worth of funds?
The monies are there, are they not?
Okay, that'd be awesome. The other part...
And then we'll just straighten that out and...
It's just restructuring.
It's just restructuring the water department budget. We're looking at possibly combining office and admin because some of the accounts in there are repetitive, so...
The other part of the question, there were two major, you know, gross concerns, I think, with the budget. And again, I'm not on your committee, so, but there were two gross concerns. One was the fact that we have these unfunded required accounts. And then the other one was that the budget as presented showed about a $60,000 deficit on the general fund side, and it showed 120,000 dollars.
And I think that's as a result of not reflecting the transfer from the reserves for the HVAC.
Right. So if we transferred, I mean, I have a huge question about that. If we transferred $80,000 to do the AC, and we spent $80,000 to do the AC, we don't have $80,000 to use to buy trucks and, and other things that we want. So do we need to tran, if we want this budget, do we need to transfer more money out of reserves? What's that mean? Is that a decision we want?
At this point in time, I don't see it.
Okay. Well, it's a bigger issue maybe than, and I'm not even on this committee, but that would be my, those are the two stoppers from my way of thinking in terms of being able to appropriate funds through an ordinance.
Well, your suggestion of bringing these other, be more detailed was a good suggestion, because it's easier to track the budget and where the money's at.
But we haven't seen that. So I mean, as it is right now, we simply see that funds aren't funded.
That's correct. But that's what he's, what Bob was indoctrinating into the line item, so that you will see this.
So the question that's before the ordinance committee right now is what to do with an ordinance that we don't, we don't have that, and they don't have that information. If it's close to the city council, I would, for instance, have to vote no because I don't have that information. What I see presented in the budget is a $60,000 deficit over the year and funds, and required funds that are not appropriately funded. So, you know, in, in terms of what to do with these ordinance. Now, the two of them are no problem, but the one appropriation...
Where did you find the 50,000 deficit?
Right in your summary. And I didn't bring any of my budget information because we're not meeting my budget.
I've already, it's already been asked and answered. It's, you know, from my estimation, it's, he believes that he's correct, I believe that I'm correct. I'm not in a position to argue. I'm going by what I, you know, what the three of us discussed with Mark Ross, and I feel confident based upon past performance on the budget that we're within guidelines. I think if you delay this, there are some serious ramifications by not approving the surpluses and that on time.
Let's, let's talk about that too, because I would suggest, you're suggesting consideration of these three. I would suggest you also consider number six on Chuck's list, appropriation ordinance, which is part of that May requirement for appropriations. We're, we're in violation of our ordinance right now. And as of June 1, we...
In your estimation, yeah.
No, as, as of the law.
In your estimation.
Well, we can read the law if you'd like. I think Chuck has a, well, I have a copy of it as well. Why, why don't we? Because it's, it's important, right?
Yeah.
So we have a law, and, and I'd love, I'd love to be wrong, but we have a law that says it's, it's 130030 appropriation ordinance, and it says that it should be the duty of the city council at the May meeting or adjournment section thereof, sessions thereof, which is now passed, to enact an ordinance...
Where, where, you're ahead.
So, you there?
No, please, I got that.
To, to enact an ordinance appropriating funds for the operation of the various departments of the city government for the year ending May 31st of the succeeding calendar year. We have not done that. It is after May 31st.
And we haven't appropriated any funds.
Which is what we're required to do, the city council's required to do here. Now, it really just has to do with this May date that we've restricted ourselves by, and the proposal that I have there simply pulls that out.
Right.
It also adds language that is more consistent with statute 67, oh, whatever that one is, oh, 7, oh, that the state statute says that what happens, and I believe what is happening right now today, is that we have automatically appropriated last year's numbers by state statute. That happens automatically.
At our special meeting, the council approved the budget.
But the budget does not appropriate funds.
That's correct.
And, and this...
But in the same token, they're asking you to pass the ordinance, present it to the ordinance committee.
That reflects the budget. That, that is an ordinance that reflects the budget.
Right.
And my guess would be, and I, I don't know this, but my guess would be that the same four council people that voted against the budget would vote against appropriating these funds for the budget.
Well, it actually, the first place it goes to is the ordinance committee.
Yeah, that's why we're talking about it now.
And the ordinance committee will have to make a motion to bring it to full council. And if it doesn't come to full council, then actually, then we could go back. We'll have to go back. But it goes through the ordinance committee. They have to either recommend...
That's, that's why we're talking about it now.
I understand that. But in the same token, you're telling me that the four councilmen voted against the budget would vote against this ordinance?
I don't, I suppose not.
Well, I mean, that's an assumption you're making.
Likely, yes.
Okay.
Hopefully, all the council would vote against it because it's flawed, but that may not be the case.
Well, it's an estimated budget. You're saying there's $50,000 shy. Bob said it's not. He's been doing the budget ever since 2007.
Well, in, in my looking at it from, from the numbers provided in this budget, it, we have run the same kind of deficit last year and the year before. And, and I don't care to point fingers and say something, somebody's wrong. What I care is that we do it right now. That's, that's all I'm asking.
I don't think that we ran a deficit budget.
I do.
Wade Stable and them said that we didn't.
No, they actually didn't. What they said is that when you combine it with our assets, with our, with our reserve funds, we don't have the problem, it's a statutory problem, of being in a deficit situation because we can use our reserve funds. But what we've done in a yearly budget is use money that we're not allowed to use for general fund activities from the business services sides, from the public works. And that's a simple, it is a very simple thing to illustrate. I didn't bring my budget because I didn't think we were gonna talk about it tonight. But if you pull the water side out, and you have the general stuff out, and you have the water side out, you have a deficit in the general side, and you have a surplus in the water side. If you go back three years and prior for the other four years that are included in the budget, you don't have that situation.
That's correct.
Right. You have a surplus always in the general fund side. So this has happened in recent years, it's happened in the last three years, that the, the problem is we are using, we are funding our general side with water surpluses, and that's not allowed.
No, we combined the water and the general budget.
Only for banking purposes, not for spending purposes.
We only did that two years ago. This is the second year of it. So it hasn't been the last three years.
Okay, well, I can check this, but it looks like it's three years to me.
We need to cut 50 grand out of it.
Yeah. Or, or talk about, do we need to spend that 60 grand? If we need to spend the 60 grand, it just needs to come out of reserves.
I, I don't understand, and I'm sure we can get into this more finance, but I don't understand how the budget is not affected at all when we're literally missing accounts that have balances of close to $900,000 that are missing. You say it's in a bulk amount of money? You know, because we have, and it's addressed here in this, this from Bob, on an operational maintenance account should have a balance of $430,000, and I'm estimating, we have about 263. Under the operational maintenance account, 715090, have it, operational maintenance account should have an annual balance of 998,000, and the replacement fund should have an annual 38,770. Under the current budget, neither of these accounts exists. How is it possible for these not to exist and not affect the budget with these changes? The, the budget that we all voted on last month? How is that possible?
You're convinced that the budget is wrong and...
No, no, this is in your statement. I'm just...
And who brought that forward to you?
I brought it forward. This is, this is right.
I did.
Right. So I'm, I'm just needing some clarification, because if, if these accounts don't exist...
It's because they're in different accounts, and that was the way the budget was previously set up. Two years ago, we made the change based upon everything that we've seen. We wanna make it correct and more transparent. That's all it is.
That's, that's good.
The monies are there.
Okay.
So when, when I spoke with Renee and, don't, don't get upset, I'm, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, I want clarification. There is nothing I can say or tell you that's gonna change your opinion?
Is that because you don't, it's not the truth? Cause that's all I'm after, Bob, is the truth.
You'll have to excuse me, ma'am.
When I went and asked Christina and Renee about these funds, their answer was, at that time, that these funds don't exist. So what you're telling me now is that they do exist, they're somewhere else?
The line items, actual general ledger line items are not there. The money is there, but the general ledger line item...
Can, can you see where our confusion is, though? I, I, we're not trying to be complicated. I'm just, this is where, this is where I'm confused, when those don't exist, and we look up for the, and like you said, if they're in a general account and the math works out, great. We'll figure out how to dissect it. I just wanna make sure that if we're missing a million dollar account, that needs to be, well, the capital improvements fund for the water department use. It says just before the water treatment plant was started, according to Marcus, it was just a precursor to establishing the two accounts for water, and two for the sewer, and as such, a fifth account is not needed. That's fine, but it, it, again, still doesn't answer the question. We may have it in a general account somewhere, but these need to be separated, just where I can understand.
They need to be there.
They're going to be.
That's, that's all.
So we need, so we need to see a budget that represents those line items.
Right. And that's, that's what I'm looking for. I, I wanna see, I wanna make sure that those reserve funds for those specific, like a depreciation fund for the water treatment plant, that's, it's, it has to be there. I'd like to make sure and see that that's there, that depreciation fund is there. Yeah.
So we're, we're waiting on that information, I think, in order to consider this ordinance?
I think it's fair for us, you know, to see that. It's not, we're not trying to cause trouble at all. Certainly, we don't want to upset anybody.
Well, then that's what we'll have to do, is if you can put them in the line items, then you'll have to work at it.
I think, I think for transparency in the future, I think it's gonna make our lives easier.
The, the income as it is right now is all put under administration. I, I just have one income.
Sure.
Okay. What the engineer suggested was to restructure that to where certain line items go in certain departments, like it does on the city.
That's great.
Okay, I'm gonna do that.
Cool.
Okay. And then the new line items for the accounts that don't exist that need to, I'm gonna do that too. But since the budget has already been approved the way it is, I cannot move money from where it's going to be coming from to my new line items. I've got a budget amendment.
Right. Which is what I suggest that we probably need. We need to amend that budget to reflect these changes, but we haven't seen that budget, that amended budget.
Right. Because it's, it's not there yet. I still have to do it.
Right. There's the problem.
Right. So, I mean, it, it's one of those things where we kind of, it's, it's kinda like with my wastewater debt service income, you know, it's, it's originally budgeted into the sewer, but it had to go into wastewater debt service. So my wastewater debt service is way over budget on income, and my sewer is way under budget. So it's just a matter of moving money from the one line item to the next, which you can't do without a budget amendment. So...
I wasn't ready to mention.
So, so why do we need to do that so that, so that we can illustrate to our citizens that we're complying with the ordinances that require these funds? Right? I mean, that's what we need to do.
We can go ahead and set up the line items and do the transferring as we're supposed to. And then, you know, we... And then, you know, I can either do it soon, and you guys can have a meeting, and redo it, or you want to wait until mid-year review to make sure that I, we have everything right.
I'd like to get it right and appropriate the right amount of funds. If there are, if there are funds that we need for appropriation for this year, for instance, the insurance issue or raises, then we should handle that just like we would any other non-budgeted amount that is required. We routinely deal with things that aren't in the budget, and we manage to pay those, and we can pay those required things just exactly the same without passing a budget and appropriating funds that we know has problems. And the other big problem, to say it again, is I do believe that this budget has an annual deficit in the general funds of up $59,000 some odd dollars. And when I show that to our city auditor, he says, yes, you cannot just, what was his word? You cannot arbitrarily use this money to fund the general fund. So we need to figure out, how are we going to fund that $60,000, and that is not there?
If there's a deficit, then consequently, you'll have to take it out of your reserves.
Right.
And make a resolution to do that.
Right, which is a big issue, right? We don't, that's not something we want to do lightly. That's something we do only if we absolutely have to, if it's a part of a long-term planning strategy that this $60,000 spent now is going to save us $100,000 later, but to just arbitrarily say we want to spend more money is, is not the way to do it.
No, that's not what you'd be saying. What you'd be saying is if you have a deficit, that you're, what you're going to have to do is take it out of your reserve, and then you're going to have to work to see where your deficit is, and you see if you can cut them down, and if you can't, then actually you have to take them out.
And what I see is a three-year trend of running increasingly, well, not increasing, actually, last year, the numbers that I added up from the budget as proposed came out to just less than $100,000 of this same problem. I don't have my budget stuff, but it's in those neighborhood, that neighborhood. There's a trend of this happening as opposed to prior to this combination where we were running surpluses in our general fund, which are, I'm far more comfortable building up our bank account than I am spending our bank account. If we need to spend something out of our bank account, we need to be able to say why specifically this is necessary, or we need to consider what can we do to not, you know, what do we have to cut back on? If we can't afford it, we can't afford it, right?
That's correct.
So...
Okay, she'll work up the line items. We'll have to have a special session. So we'll notify you when that happens.
I guess it's...
That's it.
I would ask just one more thing. Would your committee maybe want to consider the passing to full council, the one that would get rid of that May language and pull us into better alignment with the state statute? That is...
Number six.
I didn't have that. Well, I thought we handled that, but I thought we said we were going to do is I'll have Sharon type all them up. We're not going to go over any, at least until after the city attorney says a relief or they're not, they may be called.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
But number six...
You just want to change that May to what? Just get rid of it?
Get rid of it entirely, is, I remove that May requirement entirely. It's not in the state statute. And then there is a sentence that's added in there that mirrors the state statute's language in 67-070, it says it a little simpler, but...
What it says is you can hold your budget over, and if you don't have money appropriated, the council doesn't agree, and consequently, you've got many days that you can cash it about.
Reappropriate the funds from the previous year.
In the May language.
But the city sometime back has decided that they wanted the May 31st date.
Right, but for...
Yeah, that's your work.
I'm just going for the fiscal year.
For the fiscal year.
Right, which we should really try to do, but...
Okay. Okay, I guess that's it. Okay, we are, oh, Mr. Kim, go ahead.
I know lengthy discussion, just following back on, it was considered back by the track that was brought up earlier about this is going to be brought up for the ordinance on law issue next month. So I didn't know if we're even, that you're even prepared to give an update on where we're at on that.
Basically, I just, Robert has drafted it, and I would suspect that the council would like to review it. I will make copies and put it in their files tomorrow, and those that prefer it electronically, I will scan it and send it electronically.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I gave Bob a copy. I did want to make a couple little changes I saw on the ordinance. We've got a claim sale contract and a quitclaim deed. I would suggest that you make sure, you discuss it with your own attorney and make sure the legal description and the deed is to your liking, because it's not really this, we don't want some problem in five years where I say, well, there's a problem with the legal description. I mean, generally, that is the warranty's responsibility to prepare the quitclaim deed that they want. Well, we're doing that, but we don't want to assume any obligation or attorney-client relationship with respect to you, so...
And what I will do is go up tomorrow or the next day and see what's actually recorded, and see if it's the same as what we had on our copies of the quitclaim deed.
And we're just anxious to start getting it reviewed.
I understand.
And I know, I don't mean to rush anything.
And I apologize for any delay.
Okay, Chuck, before you close out, I'd, I need copies of these. And if I got them, I don't know what happened to them. I've got like four of them.
I'll get with Sharon, make sure that she has that whole list, and she'll send them through Rapp and get them to you. That's my understanding, right?
That's the way it works. Make them look like this.
Yeah, they'll just like it. They'll look like that.
I've got this one, the three that I've picked up.
While we're talking about this, Sharon said she actually didn't have these either. She said she's waiting, and she hasn't got them yet.
That's news to my conversation with Sharon, but I'll bring it up with her.
Okay, I'm just telling you. When, when? She'll have to type them up. She'll have to review all of them, so we're not letting her think right now.
Not next morning, the May.
Yeah.
No, no.
I believe that the ordinance, I mean, personally, I believe that the ordinance committee can consider the ones that I've given to you. They need to be reviewed by the lawyer at some point. I understand that, that that would be the wonderful, beautiful way to go, but if you, I recognize that we are currently in violation of our own ordinance. I kind of feel motivated to try to bring, take care of that as quickly as possible, and it's not a complicated fix, but whatever the ordinance committee wants to do.
I do have one other question. I'm concerned about the employees' interest.
Why, why would we not be able to pay that?
Next week.
Right, why would we not be able to do it right? I mean, because we already have not appropriated funds.
But we can, we can draw a resolution to pay the employees.
We do it by resolution. We could do it the same way we do it if, if we need an HVAC system for $80,000 that wasn't budgeted. Is there any reason we can't?
It only doesn't take $100 a month.
No, I agree.
And absolutely, we don't want that. We need to do whatever it takes to make certain that that doesn't happen, but we can do that.
Somebody's going to draw this resolution in to, is that the right way to do that?
That's right. Monies are supposed to be appropriated by ordinance or resolution.
So if there's a difference between what we want to do for our employees and what was appropriated last year for employees, we can address that by an ordinance or a resolution. Can you do it by resolution? Or does it have, okay, we do it by resolution at the next, next Monday.
We already have that amount, correct, Christina? The difference between last year for their raises for their insurance?
They've already been paying.
Yeah.
The difference, it started May 1st.
Right, so I mean, it's already happening.
It's in the warrant. It's just like everything else. We get warrants, or most of the bills are already paid when we, when we approve the warrants.
No, more is coming out of their check.
The employees are actually paying the, they're not, they're still seeing the four, we're still seeing the 400, not the 500. Okay.
So...
When does that change?
It's just when it makes first.
Draw up a resolution, let's get it taken care of for that issue, and give consideration to Russell's budget.
They don't need to take a $100 a month.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
You're going to draw up that resolution?
I would be glad to, or...
Mr. Rapp will draw it up.
That's fine.
I'm done, Charlie.
Yes, thank you. Remember those days.